Good evening, welcome everybody to the 11th Annual History Day Board of Trustees meeting being held on June 15, 2023, beginning at 6:30. Madam Secretary, can I have a control call, please?
Mr. President, we need your presence.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here.
Mr. Garza.
Rosa.
Jameson Lopez.
Here.
Mrs. Mosey.
Here.
Here.
Madam Secretary. Here. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will move on to Item 3, Grader and Play. Mr. Toscano, who do we have tonight?
Principal Gobaz from Heritage Middle School.
Good evening, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Mass scale school board members. It is my honor to begin our school board meeting with a couple of our amazing Heritage Middle School students. Tonight I have with me Ian Zababa, 8th grader, and 7th grader Brandon Hernandez, who will be sharing their National History Day project with us this evening. And Brandon Hernandez will start us off with the prayer, and Ian Zababa will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag and to the Texas flag. Brandon?
Please bow your head. Lord Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have given to us. Thank you for our teachers and administrators who work hard every day. Thank you for our custodians who clean our schools. Thank you for our child nutrition staff who feeds us breakfast and lunch. Thank you for our police officers who keep us safe. Thank you for our bus drivers who take us to school and home. Thank you for our parents and guardians who love us and see us. Continue to guide our school board members and Mr. Toscano, making the best decisions for all of the students in East Central. Continue to keep us all safe and healthy. Continue to bless our graduation. We ask of all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
So Brandon Hernandez is going to talk to us a little bit about his project, so give me a second. So this is Brandon. Brandon is a 7th grader at Heritage. He is on the A Honor Roll. He's in our Humanities Program. And he's going to talk to us about his National History Day project, that did go to state, by the way, Riding Rockets to New Frontiers. And he was also on our cross-country team, soccer team, track team, and of course, National Junior Honor Society.
So with the project Riding Rockets to New Frontiers, I've read a lot of things about her and how she worked in NASA and how she paved the way for many frontiers in history, all of them. She also allowed women to be in NASA and led the way for 10,000 people, 10,000 women to come into NASA and have work and allow NASA to become better than before. I learned a lot of things with my partner, Leah Erickson, and how we had to kind of diverge and how to accomplish things, even though she had all the inventory on. We still accomplished things with that and worked around it. And we got to state by working hard and getting out of school. And it was a lot of fun and work. It was really nice to see our work pay off and make it to state. And last year in Angola, I only made it to regionals, but then this year it was a good accomplishment and making it to state.
All right. Now we have 8th grader Ian Zababa. Ian was a member of our Humanities Program as well, A Honor Roll student, 95-plus GPA, and in the top 12 of his class. We had three kiddos that were tied, so we didn't have a top 10 this year. We had a top 12. Very competitive. His National History Day project was an individual exhibit, The Birth of the USS Nautilus, and again, went to state. PSAT score, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, 1130, which is on the 98th percentile in the nation. So you will put that name as well. Al number 1, EOC, will also score 50 questions answered correctly. I think you needed 20 to pass. He got 50. Recipient of the Principal's Award for being safe, respectful, responsible, placing academics first, track team, and of course, the National Junior Honor Society. Ian?
Hello, my name is Ian. I'm grateful to be here today. I am a three-year Humanities HMS student. And for two years, my project has gone to state. And this last year, I went to state. I unfortunately did not move on to nationals. But at state, I was given the award for more time for more time history. And I was approached by a former two-star admiral who liked my project and gave me a reward. And I was honored to hear him say that he'd like me to join into his national competition.
So you can see, that's his project, right there. And so definitely took a lot of time and hours. Mr. Zababa, please stand and be recognized. Mr. and Ms. Hernandez, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your support. It's amazing, kiddos like Brandon and Ian make our jobs super easy every day, so thank you. Just a couple of updates with regards to Heritage. And so with the help of Mr. Hernandez, we have submitted an application for a Purple Star designation, which essentially is going to assist our military families from day one when they come to Heritage. And so this is actually a sample of our website that we've, and I should say we, Mr. Ramirez, who's our counselor and liaison for our military families, has created with everything that our military families need to know about Heritage and what to expect when they come to Heritage Middle School. And so we will find out, hopefully in August, September, if we receive this designation, whether or not we receive it, we're going to continue to support our military families. So these are a couple of pictures of our Veterans Day luncheon and some of our staff members as well. But we had a bunch of our veterans come in and sit and have lunch with their students during our lunches, our three lunch periods. And so it was a fantastic opportunity to sit and talk to some of our families. And again, our staff members and recognize them. So those of you who remember Mr. Nunez, Mr. Bobby Lancaster, he's our maintenance man, who also served in the US Services. So super proud of that and all the hard work. And so just wanted to also update everyone on the 2022 bond that was passed. And super excited, even though we're a little displaced at the moment. It is all good because our school is looking fantastic. I can't even, I don't have enough words, but it is definitely different. So I'm going to start with just saying, no more lockers. And what a difference just the lockers alone make. So just kind of wanted to show some before and after pictures. Definitely not where we want it to be, deadline. Our goal is August 2nd, that it's going to be beautiful, but I just wanted to update the community. So you can tell that already the hall is look wider and cleaner, right, without the lockers. And the secured vestibule, so in front, that whole wall was taken down. That whole area is going to be one solid wall with just one door entrance. And so it is definitely looking a lot different. Before, the polished concrete floors, of course, we've all seen the tile floors. And this company that they have working for us is doing an amazing job. As a mom, I love it when, you know, you make a mess, you clean it up right away, right? That's exactly what they're doing. So it has been less mess, so, so awesome and amazing. So that's before the polished concrete floors. And now look at our floors. Yeah. What a change, right? It's definitely beautiful and so super excited. And again, this is only the third week that they've been working there. And so much has happened in three weeks. It's amazing. And last but not least, restrooms. So these are the walls, okay? Everything's been taken out of the restrooms. These are the walls, of course, been painted on top of paint, on top of paint, you know? However, this is the beginning of the new restrooms with tile teal, and I'm not sure what color that white-ish color is, but what an improvement, what an improvement. And so I was telling Ian, he's going to have to come back and visit one day to be able to see it because it is amazing. It truly is. And this is only, guys, three weeks, not even three weeks. Tomorrow's three weeks. So amazing job that this construction company is doing for us. So on behalf of Heritage Middle School, our staff, our parents, I want to say thank you for everyone who voted yes for our bond and the improvement. So thank you so much.
That's great. That is awesome. All right. With that, we will move on to Item 4, Awards and Recognitions. Mr. Toscano.
Sirs President, Trustees, we have three groups we would like to recognize this evening. Mr. Kay will introduce each. We are very honored to have all of them here, starting with our softball team. We are all very proud of. And of course, two employees who are leading the East Central, who we recognize and building relationships. And then finally, we have some representatives from I from Conal Alto, who will be sharing some information about the Alamo Promise Scholars that this graduating class is representative of. So we're very proud to have that partnership and have you guys here.
Mr. Kay? Yes, sir. What I'd like to do first is let's call our amazing East Central softball team up with their coaches. You guys can on after. So as they're getting settled, I'm going to start reading because there's a lot to cover. Our 2023 East Central softball team had a historic season that left our community, school, and hearts full of pride. The team is made up of eight seniors, one junior, three sophomores, and four freshmen. And they had a playoff run that actually lasted longer than their district season. This season, our girls made East Central High School history as co-district champs for the first time in 10 years. Then they went on to win five district championships, area champions, regional quarterfinal champions, regional semifinal champions, and ended their season as regional finalists. In the playoffs, they faced four teams that were district champions and defeated three, to include knocking off the defending state champion, O'Connor Lady Panthers. Let's give them another applause. So this team consists of one district superlative, 11 academic all-district, three academic all-state, four first-team all-district, and five second-team all-district. Five of these seniors are graduating, are going on to complete their academic and softball career. One is a senior that will leave East Central with a CNA certification. One is going to be studying at the University of Texas in Austin, and one will be furthering her career at Lakeview College. We are proud of their tenacity and their resilience, focus and strength, not only as softball players, but more importantly, as people. One important motto that the East Central Athletics is to be better people first, better students second, and better athletes third, and in that order. And that is exactly what these athletes have done for us. We are incredibly proud of you. I'd like you just to raise your hand. Aviano Martinez, Jamie Lynn Hart, Kenzie Leos, Lorena Gomes, Emily Obeda, Isabella Vidal, Isabella Hernandez, and Zoe Walter. We have two assistant coaches here tonight, Karina Thornton and Fernando Luna, and then our head coach, Maggie Wellon. Let's give them one more round of applause. Would any of the family and our friends also stand and be recognized at this time as well? We deserve to owe you that as well. I think they're all up here in the front. Good job. A lot of fun watching them compete this year. We just have a few photos that we'll scroll through. So you can see, this is some photos through their playoff run. So as they kept knocking everybody off, going through, they continue to celebrate. So you can imagine how exciting this was. So we're really, really happy and proud of you guys. Great job. Fantastic. So next, we would like to recognize for leading the East Central for builds relationships, Ms. Betty Vasquez from Heritage Middle School. Come on. So Ms. Vasquez is Heritage Middle School's safety monitor for the last three years. She is very conscientious about her role to keep our students and staff safe at all times. As you can imagine, she has built many positive relationships with our staff and our students, considering that she knows every classroom and every hallway. Many of our teachers will call Betty to talk to students, or if they are having any concerns regarding safety and security, she takes the time to check in with her teachers and staff to establish a personal relationship built around trust and genuine interest. You will find Betty at girls' and boys' basketball games and tournaments, even on Saturdays. She attends our track meets, football, and soccer games, always wearing her Heritage shirt, cheering on her Hurricanes. Many of our students will seek out Betty to talk with her as well. She takes the time to check in with students who seem to be struggling throughout the day. She knows that they can go to her when they need help. Heritage and East Central community is very fortunate to have someone who loves their job and gives 100% each and every day to ensure the safety and well-being of each and every student and staff member. We are very proud of you, Ms. Vasquez. Thank you. Would any of her family also stand to be recognized? She's got a group of family that's here to stand and be recognized after the day. Great job. Great job. Thank you. Excellent. Next, we would like to call up Amanda Riones from Tradition Elementary School. Come on. Carl Reunier once said, "That they may forget what you said, but they will never forget how you made them feel." Reading this quote is one thing, but living it out is what Tradition kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Amanda Riones, does every single day. Mrs. Riones has created a strong teaching team by meeting her fellow teachers' needs and getting to know them on a personal level. She consistently seeks feedback and listens to peers as a way to build up her team and make them unstoppable. Amanda is present and approachable and makes stakeholders as well as students feel comfortable and heard. In her classroom, Mrs. Riones has fostered a safe environment where students openly share learning, celebrate successes, and feel a sense of community and belonging. Amanda grows our tiniest titans into self-advocating tough titans. In addition, she received a grant from the Alamo Bowl for STEM that includes an imagination lab for all kindergarten students to grow in their love of science. Mrs. Riones went above and beyond by enrolling and funding her own training and implementation for heart-centered management, where relationships are a key component. In conclusion, Christian author Joyce Meyer once said, "We can improve our relationships with others by leaps and bounds if we become encouragers instead of critics." Mrs. Riones is the definition of encouragement and relationship building. She leads the way by encouraging students and making them feel loved, accepted, just as they are. Great job. Very proud of you. Would her family also stand? So you can be, nice, thank you for your support. So for the Alamo Promise Scholarship, or Scholar Award, I'd like to call your Vice President, Delilah Marquez, to the podium for the presentation for Alamo Promise. My name's yours.
Good evening, Superintendent Toscano, Board of Trustees, community members. It is my honor and privilege to be here tonight with you, just celebrating, right? Many milestones of achievement. I'd like to first recognize our PAC team who is here with me because our work could not be done without our PAC team and of course, with the family of East Central. We have our Dean of Student Success, Tyler Archer, our enrollment coach, Evelyn, who is here with me tonight, and myself, I'm Vice President of Student Success at Palo Alto College. So on behalf of our administration and our leadership, Dr. Robert Garza, I come to not only celebrate, but recognize the hard work, the tenacity, the dedication, and the continued passion of East Central. Congratulations, 92% of Alamo Promise commitment forms have been completed. And what does that mean, right? That means 92% of your students have committed to continue their education with the Alamo Colleges, free tuition cost. That means those who have committed to any of the Alamo Colleges, Palo Alto College, were here saying thank you. 92%, and I repeat that because it's a profound amount of percentage of your high school graduating seniors really committing to continue their education with Alamo Colleges. You can't get free tuition anywhere else. So with that, I say thank you. We have a few awards to recognize individuals. And I also want to just extensively say thank you to those parents and those supporting family members because again, without you, nothing is possible. And we often hear, right, it takes a village, but it takes you, starting at home with our guardians, with our parents. Congratulations to the young men just earlier celebrating those accomplishments. And East Central definitely wants to see that trajectory, and Alamo Colleges wants to see the same. And so we have a mantra at Palo Alto College. It's Karen Gorason. And so we want to say thank you for entrusting your students to attend Alamo Colleges. Palo Alto welcomes the students with open arms and allow us to share the Karen Gorason with each student that walks on campus. So with that, let's go ahead and recognize, first of all, your superintendent, Mr. Toscano. We've got, so you want to do a full picture after that with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Not a problem. Melissa Barnett, who is East Central High School principal. Tiffany Zunker Embry, who is the high school advisor. And it's Cristiana, I don't want to, if someone can help me with the name, please. Lisea, Cristiana Lisea, who is the high school college and career facilitator. And again, this is your East Central high school team that helps your students navigate and transition to their success. So thank you very much. If we can go ahead and have the Palo Alto team come up and take a picture. Once again, 92%. We should be very proud.
All right. With that, we're going to take a short, brief pause. We're reconvening about 7:05. It gives about 10 minutes, so we'll reconvene at 7:05. Item 5, Public comment. First up, we've got Lisa Fox. General topic is bullying policy. Ms. Fox, come on.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Fox. I live in Alamo Heights I D District, so why am I here tonight? An incident happened at my son's junior school, over two years ago, and that's brought me onto this path of being on the road between our parents. In this incident, my son was targeted by his 7th grade football agent because he wore his club football jersey instead of his Alamo Heights football jersey. In the seven to eight minutes, he was harassed and just bullied for over seven to eight minutes. After that, he was taken to the office and made a report, and the rest of the boys were given a discipline action of 100 bear calls by these two football coaches. Short, well, one sort of short, they were all just given a slap on the wrist. I assessed their behavior. Two boys were given, I guess what you would say, out of school suspension to another school for two weeks, got out, been 10 days for good behavior. My son ended up leaving the school because he could not handle it, and these boys still play football, and that won't rest a year. In these, in this time, I learned about bullying and what it does, how it's reported, and all school districts exactly how it's called, not just Alamo Heights, but on to all school boards since this journey has started the last two months. And requesting y'all's numbers, y'all's numbers, they don't even have a record of how many incidents were reported, only how many are reported in state that meet the bullying criteria. What is that? So when a student makes an accusation or incident report, they go by this checklist, school districts. If they do not meet the bullying checklist criteria, you do not have to report the state of Texas as a bullying incident. So you can treat it however you want or mark it however you want. In this effort, many students are not being heard and not being given the help they needed, including the bullying themselves. So my, today I bring you guys just a couple of recommendations that this is okay for whatever student does make an accusation or incident, whether it be anonymous or online, or to admin, a teacher, council, whatever, this be given to the student directly so they can educate themselves about what bullying is and what they have to do and how to report it correctly for them to get the help and report the numbers correctly in the state. This is not just Alamo Heights, it's all around San Antonio. I also recommend that y'all look at y'all's policy when it comes to bullying and the punishment. I believe that bullying is a very, very, is not given the attention it needs. I don't know what each school does punishment otherwise, but I do believe that y'all should look into what these, I guess punishment is towards bullying. There's a lot of people. Also, there was a bill passed last year that does require every school district to have an anti-bullying policy committee for the district it is, maybe 2020, or 2050. It's also something that happens, this may also help with bullying and reporting. I think you're very kind.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. We will move on to Valerie Deister, sharing her comments.
I don't remember if it's worth, I'm concerned to you, but paying my attention to my people. I live in Sinclair, Timmets, so we can, we're close to each other. We have a lot of new owners going up and out there. And we very often have realtors who come to the door and knock on the door and say, what are your names? Like text messages. We had a realtor come to the door, we had a visit. And it wasn't the first time. And so I had asked her about why the houses in our subdivision seem to be moving very quickly. And so her comment to me was that when the parents go and look out for a school break, and when the parents go to check out our schools, the school is on the center of children to our regular school. That diminishes our ability to do all of the very programs that we've heard about this morning, this afternoon. You know, I was sitting here waiting for this. You know, I was sitting here waiting to lose a tradition of quality education, and that is the standard tradition. And so my concern is that perception and the reality of what the scores are giving to us as a community and what that looks like, we have people trying to move into our community. We do not want to, we lose our families to charter schools. I'm a public educator myself, I'm not in this district, but I have been in education for over twenty-five years. We want our children in our good public schools where they have lots of opportunities. We hope on them somewhere else. So I want you to be aware so that when you're making these decisions, it's my school board is making decisions, I know, what is next year going to be like, how are we going to develop our program for the community, the true way, that this perception is out there. And when realtors are selling homes in our new subdivision all over here, this is what our parents are getting told, well, you know, the readyness. And so they're going to not buy it or they're going to lose something. So I just want you to be aware, so to add you to that, that we can make the best decisions again, the district, that we can have great influence in our school and great schools. It's all about our perception, that's what we're going to do. If our kids aren't performing, they're going to be doing things. Thank you. I wanted to bring you your.
Thank you, Ms. Deister. All right, with that, we're going to move on to trustee reports. We've seen it getting there, Ms. Freelo, you're up.
Well, I get to the little white folks, so we did the final tiny tour of two years, and they weren't really even on the good, but they're excited, due to three weeks, two years, two years to go back and see the vinyl project, but they already have buyers, potential buyers, they're really excited about it, and I'm really impressed with the work that these kids have done on this new campus. Just being, it's not really if they're good in one of these professions or not, but just being able to be prepared to maybe throw a bomb, maybe next thing, throw a bomb, is the mindset that they have in this program. Also, I mean, the last two, it's always been women, that being very recognition, that heritage was amazing, I got to meet a couple of those kids that went, they're so crazy ridiculous, and they have a lot of their heritage, what else did I hear? The, oh, the Heritage Choir final concert was amazing, I have those pictures of them or videos, and there are some kids that did a bunch of solos. Who does a solo in middle school? Not many kids will get up there and sing by themselves, it's crazy. They did well, it was a lot of fun, and I'm glad we're here.
Well, I went to a ballgame, it was on the girls' ballgame, it was super exciting. It's been a long time since I've been exposed to that level of excitement, so I was really happy to be a part of getting to go to one of the games, and that's about it.
I was way out of town, obviously, actually, I was even out of the continent, so I can't, I got none to say to you. Miss smoking, I wonder how I T. So, so I got nothing to tell you, except it's a lot of water between here and there. Maybe next time.
Well, I took spring football, it was really exciting, and also I went to the central graduation, and I saw so many kids graduating, going to college, going to military, and went through the school system, twelve years, and some of the accomplishments that they have accomplished to go into the workforce, to go into the military, go into college is a very successful endeavor.
You know, sorry I missed that, really did, really wish.
All right, so I had the privilege of trying to make all the events, and we're kind of like, what do we do now during the summer right now? But we enjoy the similar events that Ginger was talking about, the tiny house, that was neat, so working for CPIS Energy, I see that, and it really gives me hope because we're really hurting in that, that field, right, in the industry side of it. So seeing these young people getting some skills, some trade skills, if you will, and seeing their, their knowledge at an early age is really impressive, so they're doing great stuff over there at East Central, and it's a thrill to see the young people wanting to learn craft. Then going to the softball games online, what an amazing ride it was to meet, and awesome opportunity to go see the young athletes, just give everything they have, and they did a great job. This was my first graduation on the stage, and that was a thrill, seeing eight hundred and forty young people going off, like to college, to military, all these achievements that we heard about, it was really, and getting to that idyllic connection with them was awesome. Just, I mean, I told, and I tried to tell everyone, I didn't want to say I told all of them, but I wanted them to understand that they had a champion dancing in the root form, and that was me, I'll be their biggest cheerleader. So that's, that's all I got, I can keep on, I'll stop.
Well, I, me too, just was forward to the graduation talk, and we did a play into that, into a few, but I don't know if it was a game or a lesson, it was, it was such a level of machine, it was just, it was amazing, and I couldn't believe how organized it was, and I, again, I've been to a few of them. I especially liked seeing Mr. Case Demeter with his, I don't know, senior, I, I felt like you could have gone up there and been to that, just me, but I appreciate that, I saw it was inside him, and I just appreciate it. And I appreciate that, I also appreciate it, getting to do my next door neighbor or new killer, and one of the nurses in the physician's office, and the doctor's office, so, especially warming, I have to really appreciate it, and how safe people are out there, and how well organized and worthy our schools and schools were, it's really important.
I'm having a, not this one.
I feel bad I didn't remember graduations, I just want to say. I was there, I feel such funny, I look so far, but you know, it was a testament to how we simply grow our kids, because then we have our superintendent and our principal stand up there and talk about how many kids are joining the military, how many are going to be able to be nurses, physician assistants, laboratory, workers, fire science, I mean, I could go on, but it's just incredible with our career in military-ready students, how many kids have gained, what they've gained for East Central. So it's testament to what the truth is, and always said, and as we grow our kids, so scores, things don't always tell a true story once, and that's why I was very proud of it.
All right, we will move on to item seven, superintendent's report, seven point one, personnel report, Ms. Toscano.
Trustees this month and next is typically our most active in terms of personnel transition. You've met, our retirees are here in May at our employee recognition ceremony. You'll see a lot of activity with resignations, and you'll see beginnings of a lot of activity for replacement of this place right now. So we'll be happy to answer any questions that you want to tell related to the activities there, and we look forward to a lot of activity this month and next, which is very typical this time of year. And as you've seen before, it all would be, there is a lot of turnover, of education since early, like in March, and last year, this year, going to talk into bullying, and ESPEX database of thirty-six thousand certified teachers who leave, they've been speaking in the profession essentially retired or, thirty-six thousand, only twenty-nine thousand certified teachers who listed. And of that twenty-nine thousand, only six thousand actually finished the head prep program at any of our colleges and universities in the state of Texas. We remain twenty-three thousand are alternatively certificated, and those typically have a two-year attrition. So the state of Texas education law is related to the teacher's life. The governor pulled the task force together, said about the commission of education, I served on that task force for the entire year last year, and there were some very direct resignations to the governor from that task force, primarily driven by teachers. I'm unhappy to say that none of those recommendations have been included as outcomes in this legislative session, they're in special session now, we'll see what happens, but none of those recommendations that the governor commissioned through that task force have been supported by, by any action in policy. And so it's important for the vote to know that, it's important for the vote to pay attention to what's going on during the special session, to see that our teachers are supported across Texas. We have a dilemma, and this is not a dilemma that's been created in recent years, it's been building for many years, it's going to get worse, but towards it's better than the state of Texas to acknowledge that public education matters in Texas, and driving towards behind the quality of that education is going to give quality to teachers and be included in the profession, we develop our schools across Texas. So we're very active in personnel this month and next, as is every single school that's here in here.
All right, move on to seven point two, new middle school, okay, Ms. Toscano.
Trustees, we have Ben and Carlos here from LPA, and wanted to provide the board with an update on our middle school design process, our new middle school design process, which we have from property next to tradition in St. Hedwig. As you're all aware, this team has been working for months getting, informing the design. They have had a series of meetings, as you're very much aware, with stakeholders from both legacy heritage staff, students, families, staff, representatives, departments across the district, and most recently engaged the St. Hedwig community to refine the design, to clearly have the external, exterior materials, et cetera, and so. Culmination of that work, Ben's going to present today, but probably the most exciting thing we're sharing today are some preliminary renderings, design location, layout, interaction between it and tradition, as well as the design concepts, elements that are going to be incorporated at this stage, based on all of that feedback. So Ben's going to share, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask those at the conclusion of the presentation, though it will have an upcoming workshop, if you're goal setting, it could be another opportunity for the board to interact with LPA more specifically about the design, if they're at the point, if they're ready to do the trans, so we wanted the board to be up to speed with where that is at this point in time. Ben?
Thank you, Ms. Toscano, thank you board, and thank you for the community for having us out tonight. We are thrilled to share an update of how we got to where we are, and take a look at the state of the design today for the new middle school. So just quickly, you know, we, we wanted to learn from the success of Tradition Elementary School, and that process yielded phenomenal outcomes that we're going to take with us and have been taking with us in the progress of our design to date. Some of what you'll see here is that, you know, we started with extensive conversations with existing staff of both main schools. We went through a series of workshops with district leadership to really establish a vision for the process of the design, and we also facilitated what we call pre-occupancy surveys of all of the existing middle school staff to really inform the work that we were going to carve out for ourselves even ahead. We worked together with the district to establish, worked together with the district to establish project-guiding principles, which really are like our North Star, and we're using this kind of as a baseline to check in on as we progress through the various milestones of the project, to see how well we're tracking against these guiding principles. So first and foremost, this project is for every student, it's for every staff member and every community member, and that is our North Star. We then established project goals with the district and the community under four distinct categories that we believe have measurable outcomes. So when this project is built, these are goals that we can look back and measure our success in lens. We want to serve the whole student, we want all of our students and staff to be well, both inside and outside of the building. We want to cultivate community ownership over the space and place, and have had extensive interactions with various community stakeholder groups throughout the process to date. We want the experience of this place to foster the ECISD aims as a graduate, and most importantly, or not most importantly, but also we want to be good stewards of all the resources that we are utilizing in and around this building project. So early in our engagement so far in the design process, we, we heard from students, teachers, and parents, and community members, and we're surprised to see how much alignment there was across each of these stakeholder groups. And we heard many times over that, you know, student safety is on the forefront of every community member's mind. And most recently, we went through visual listening exercises with faculty, students, district leadership in the city of St. Hedwig, to carve out a vision of what the visual identity of this place should be. And it was also a great way to see how much alignment there was across those different stakeholder groups in terms of the visual identity of this place. So we've taken what we've learned, we've, we've taken it upon ourselves to do some research on the St. Hedwig community and understand what the real kind of identity makers are of this place, and, you know, have taken inspiration even from where we are today. And there's a little map up there of the central office and the configuration of the buildings here around the central courtyard. And you'll see here how that is coming to the forefront even through workshops with the community. So what you see up on the screen is what we call a model-building workshop, and we engaged students, teachers, and staff, district leaders, to think with us, you know, with their own architectural toolkit, and move blocks around the site of this project in a similar way that we would, we would do in our office, and really talk through some of the major issues and challenges that we're going to face in the design process. And what we learned as an outcome was that there's consensus around how the building should really be shaped, to be a place that is safe, to be a place that is secure, to be a place that is providing a warm embrace to the community, and that is sort of the shape of the courtyard itself. We then took it upon ourselves to visit the site and really understand and listen, listen to what the land was telling us about how it needed to be utilized. And what we found is that there are elements of the site that are highly cultivated and currently used for raring purposes, and we believe that's a metaphor for the high level standard and the highly cultivated academic career that we want to occur in this new campus. We also saw that there were pockets of the land that were left untouched, and frankly, they were beautiful. It was amazing to see how nature has just taken over, and we believe that's a metaphor for how this project should embrace every student, every staff, and every community. And we bring these thoughts together, we kind of come to an understanding of a major concept, that when we combine these elements, we get to define how learning happens best at this new middle school. And so those are the key ingredients to how we're beginning to compose the elements of the building. What you see on the screen here is a three-dimensional diagram of how every major component kind of comes together around a central courtyard theme. Just looking a little deeper at the site plan, our site is immediately adjacent to Tradition Elementary School, which is faintly here in white, black and white. Tradition Elementary School, which is faintly here in white, black and white lines. We have our athletic fields oriented to the north side of the site, and the school facility itself, building itself, on the southern side of the site. We are looking at providing a new road that would really loop around the entire perimeter of our new site with ample space for car stacking and bus stacking as well. As we begin to compose the floor plans, we're looking at drawing lines of parity between the existing middle school campuses, and every element that you see here on the screen exists at the other middle schools today in some way, shape, or form. And we are looking at ways that we can improve upon elements of the existing middle school campuses that are really successful. So on the ground floor, sorry, on the ground floor, in red is our administration, and in the light blue colors are our classrooms and what we call learning neighborhoods. In the light purple color, we have performing arts behind the cafeteria and the stage. And on the opposite side of the plan, we have the journalism room, fine arts room, and gymnasiums and gym support. The library is in the core of the courtyard, because what we heard when we engaged students and staff is that, in many ways, the library is the heart of the campus, and we believe we want it, you know, this, it needs to be reflected that way here in the design of the middle schools. This is a multi-level building, and we will have two grade levels on the second floor, sixth grade and eighth grade on the second level, connected by CTE classrooms and CTE So the way that this culminates and comes together now, which we're excited to share, a view, a handful of views, and this is a view of the primary visitor entry, so as you approach the school. And there are elements that we're really trying to draw from that are very successful at Tradition Elementary. We have overhangs with express structure, we have limestone, elements of dark bronze and aluminum storefronts, native landscape, Brazilian landscape, and metal panels. So we're really doing our best to draw from the successes of tradition while not mimicking it, but really treating it as what we call a cousin project and not a sibling project. And that's the kind of elevation we think we want for our middle school kids. This is a distinct place, it's distinctly their own. So here's a little bit of a closer view of that visitor entry porch, and of the large deep overhangs with primary entry right there to the left to the view. And then a view of the interior courtyard with opportunity for learning stairs and opportunity for outdoor classroom on what would be the rooftop of the walkway. What we heard in our community engagement sessions was that we need space for outdoor learning to occur, and if we have it, it needs to be shaded, because we know, like today, it's hot. So we're going, we're going to provide ample shade for outdoor learning. Another view from the courtyard, looking at the library, and with the learning stair kind of in the background there, and looking up into the CTE classrooms and labs on the second floor. This is a view from the parent pickup and drop off area, so the gymnasium is on your left, and the cafeteria is on your right, connected by a covered canopy walkway. Finally, another view of the cafeteria, looking from the middle school. So where we're headed, and I'm happy to pull back out any of those views to talk about for a little. Where we're headed, a component of our visual listening exercise is just deeply focused on the interior quality of the space and on the interior quality of the architecture. So we're learning, we're consolidating where there were points of convergence in those studies as well, and how we can utilize that to inform the design craftsmanship of the interior. So we're just beginning conversations about what should the material palette of the interior be, and what should the quality of those interior spaces feel like. Overall, we've just concluded our schematic design phase, and we are now into design development, which is the next stage of progression in the overall width of the design. And the project is being estimated by RCNEAR, and we expect to hear back on pricing within a handful of weeks. Questions?
Any reason why the eighth and sixth are on top or the seventh on bottom?
Yes, so we can come back and take a quick look. What we heard in our engagement was that sixth grade really wants to feel like they have their own place that is not highly trafficked and spaced apart from the other grade levels to minimize distraction, and to really feel like they have their own micro community. So by placing it on the second level as opposed to having seventh grade on the second level, we're able to do that by minimizing overlaps in circulation between the grade levels through that fourth.
And I have one question, perfect spot here. That's all these glass windows, how they're facing the light, is that, since that's basically in the head of the building, how it's basically what goes over here with the students and parents about all of them?
Yes. So right where the blue star is, is where that view is kind of looking.
The actual road, right?
That's exactly right. So you will have already entered the campus from, you will have already entered the entrance to the school.
Is that the main entrance for children's school?
For visitors, yes.
Let's add on to Mr. Robert's question. Is that going to be?
So, man, we, the district did move forward in relation to the standard, in relation to the security layers. The layers are within the lobby space, from the lobby to the headroom, so that is where the lockdown or the address, the lobby security area is. On the exterior, the elevation, John is going through the process through the process of staying to address what we call shadow resistance. So from the side, it's not a bullet resistant glass system, it is just a shadow resistant, which means that it, it's just an deterrent to try and address time in relation to being given to the facility itself. So just the lobby space within that containment is where you have the, these are the bullet resistance transactions. We did that process from the first, we got sixteen bond, three or four entry schools, and at this time, we're addressing the rest of the campuses. So just to clarify, front entry, exterior is not bullet resistant, it's a lock. Is there?
Do you have a question? Awesome, that's great. Thank you.
Seven point three, moving on, seven point three, point three two, point three three, break down the department of elementary school. Trustees, I'd all count it forward, Dr. Boian, to provide the board with an update of progress in the curriculum for the children. Next steps, follow along, we'll jump back into the part of the university's back.
Mr. Nast, the officer Tiscano, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present. Before we get started, can I introduce two of our newest members to you? We've got Marisa Perez and Joshua Kabute, they're our new special education directors, and Joshua's gonna get us started.
My name is Joshua Kabute, like we said earlier, I'm one of the two new special education directors here at East Central, and part of the curriculum instruction department. So now we're here to give you a really short, we said we're gonna do in six minutes, so in six minutes of what we've got about the curriculum instruction and assessment department update, all the directors here, and all you type of those slides to go over. And we're gonna go ahead and start off with Mr. Donton Albert to go over the priority one, teaching and learning requirements.
On that slide at the top, it's kind of some highlights for you of the current year at the bottom, kind of looking forward, and I'm gonna read them on to you, but a couple of highlights. We did have over two hundred students earn industry-based certifications this year, so we're proud of that. And we did expand, we are expanding our schools of choice going forward, so P-Tech, over East Central High School, add that for ninth grade next year. We have the PB STEM Academy, Kansas Lidl, add twelfth grade, and Solana's gonna add at sixth grade to their leadership academy. And then a couple, a couple of stories for you, instead of reading all that to you there. Over at Legacy, first story's really about Legacy, so we had a real push to try to help out our teachers, we spent a ton of time planning, trying to get things ready, we do a great job, and so we added some new materials for them over this last year, so it was our first year at secondary math, having new materials for them. And so the company that we partnered with came out to Legacy, and they were so impressed with how they were doing that they started inviting more and more other people out, they thought that it was some of the best implementation they'd seen, and so they started asking other people to come out. So that's the first story. The second story, also at Legacy, Marzano was doing their big national conference, they were with people all over the world, and they asked Ms. Casper and I if they could come visit East Central, because they heard so many things about what we were doing. And so they also wanted to go see Legacy. And so there was a day, I think it was in March, where I was over at Legacy, where we had people visiting classrooms from Marzano, we had a team from Laredo, we had another team visiting math, all at the same time. We had so many visits that we actually had to start turning people away and say, no, we just wanna make sure we're doing a great job at East Central and take care of our own. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Casper, she's gonna talk about priority two.
All right, so we know that one way to positively impact student learning is to employ a high performing and engaged workforce. I'd like to share a few highlights from this year that shows how our department accomplished that. We have fifteen paraprofessionals in the early childhood pre-K program that we were able to provide with training and a certification in an early childhood development course, which also included CPR and first aid training, and that's training they can take with them no matter where they go, where they grow, and really impacts our students in having highly trained and effective teachers. We have eighty-seven teachers in grades K through three complete the Texas Reading Academy, which is part of the state requirement, and then totaling, for the, for our last fifty-three years, a total of two-hundred-and-ten that have completed that reading academy, and that's really focused on best practices on foundational reading skills, making sure that our students really, really learn how to read and read. Our secondary math teachers, as Jonathan was talking about earlier, were supported with the implementation of that new curriculum, with over a hundred-and-fifteen hours of professional development and coaching from both our internal curriculum staff and external staff. And then we're also working with twenty-six student interns right now, building their capacity and job-ready skills that will help them succeed once they graduate high school and hopefully come back to East Central and teach and work like so many of us. I'm gonna pass it on to Dr. Amanda.
So one of our goals here at East Central is to build inclusive and collaborative partnerships, both inside of the district and outside of the district for students and our staff. And so we're really proud to report that just over two-hundred-and-seventy students persisted in field experiences this year, both onsite in the district and offsite in our community partner organizations, to earn some of the industry-based certifications and get real-world experience to help them move forward in their career paths. We did execute a partnership with Hold Cat, just down the road, that we're really excited about, to see that flourish over the next several years. Again, we'll be opening the P-Tech campus in the fall with a hundred-and-ten freshmen going into whole science fields. Our partnership with pre-K for SA has been a really tremendous partnership for some of our littlest learners in the district, the reading academy participation in that gym just mentioned, and also the outdoor learning area grants that are being built at all of our campuses are really making learning great for those students. We also partnered with YDA BCA in a little bit of a different way this year, where they actually hired some of our senior students to work for them in our early childhood programs. So our students who were gaining hours of experience in early childhood worked for them from three to six every day to take care of our students, and that was in a safe environment for those students, both the little students and the middle. And then we were really proud of our first ever district-wide family engagement, and then four schools of choice, we look forward to having those happen more frequently, and our partnership with UT Teen Health has continued to be something that we really value and cherish. So moving forward, we really look about, we're really excited about the partnerships that we've developed this year, continue to grow them, communicate those students' experiences, and provide experiences for our staff and our community as well. I will turn it over to Dr. Martinez, and she will talk about priority four.
So priority four speaks to the resources and the operation of excellence that we follow here in Central. And so we mainly focus on the fidelity of the distribution of our financial management systems. We, all as sub-departments, have different fundings that we have to distribute in different ways, but we all align together and make sure that we follow the same system, so it's very transparent to all of our campuses, our community, and all of us as sub-department directors. One of the things that I would like to highlight, as we do when we focus, is that we look at high-quality staff. So in our presentation, you'll notice that a lot of our faculty, administrators, teachers, and instructional assistants are fortunate to attend conferences, national conferences, state conferences, and even EC conferences within our set, within our district, and then even our own sub-department professional development that we do. We're very proud to say that this year, our two-choice schools of dual language were chosen to present to the city of San Antonio at the SABIC conference, and our principals did an amazing job presenting. We have a lot of people asking and wanting to visit our dual language campuses, so we're proud of that. We also have our, so our sources are used for student engagement, so some of the ways that we use our funding is to make sure that our students have the opportunity to visit Texas A&amp;M, UTSA, they were invited to Market Square to celebrate a cultural celebration of Dia de los Muertos, so obviously transportation, trying to get these students to these places, that's how we're using our funding. One of the other ways that we're very proud of, how we use our funds, is validating. So you all know that we're getting a huge merger of students that are coming in, sometimes maybe from different countries, different languages, and we use the system that allows us to investigate and research their educational background, so that we don't have to start from the surface. We can give them the appropriate credit and make sure that they're in the correct classes. So we're very proud of doing that for our students. And last but not least, our funds are also used for family engagement. We're very proud of our ESL classes here at East Central. This year, we had approximately thirty adults attending our ESL classes, and I did a little survey, and all but one were not parents from East Central. So they are our community from East Central. These, through these ESL classes and the collaboration that we have with Region Twenty, they are able to obtain their paraprofessional certificates, and that paraprofessional certificate is valid all in the state of Texas. Of course, they all wanted to be paraprofessionals in dual language, so we said that's not gonna happen, so we invited them to become substitutes, helping us build a bank of substitutes at both our dual language academies, and we're very proud of that. One of the other ways that we support our community is helping them get their GED. Sometimes they're, they're wanting to get their GED, but they're not at the level of proficiency in English that they need to be, so we work where they can take the GED in Espanol, they can do it in Spanish. And then, of course, we also have, we're working with a company in Austin, where we help our community validate their education from wherever they're coming, from any country that they're coming. We guide them and we help them and make sure that they get a foundational level of their schooling from their country, just like we do for students, we do the same for adults. And then, of course, we help them and guide them to speak to Texas A&amp;M, or any opportunity for them to further their education in this country. And then one of the other things that we also work on is interpreters. We're very proud of having the opportunity for our parents to communicate, no matter their language, with anyone at our campuses through an app that we use and different kinds of resources. And last but not least, we're very part of Quentes too, that was, Quentes and Paseo, those were two different opportunities that we offered to our parents to come and learn, one of them was to come and learn how to support their children at home in reading and writing, and the other one was to help them understand what, what it does, what it takes to be able to go to the university or college. So we were helping our parents understand what the So we were helping our parents understand what the system requires of them as parents to help their children be successful. With that said, I'm going to conclude.
Good evening. Again, once again, I'm Marisa Perez and one of the new special ed directors. And as you can see, the curriculum instruction and assessment department has been working really hard. And we look forward to continuing to be in the 2023 school.
All right. Item 74, for fourth, admin department. I'll call athletic directors, head of the podium, if the board was okay. Form our athletic board.
So as usual, I brought the bride, I brought the bride and the white bags there for additional two minutes. Just the joke, just the joke. All right, good evening, President Massi, Superintendent Discano, and board members. I bring to you the, Stone, look at you getting in the bag early over there. Don't cut into my time, don't cut into my time. I'm excited to bring to you the end of season report for EC Athletics and all the success that we have this year. So with that success, we start with priority one, because that's where it all starts. It starts with our athletic staff development and making sure that we are vertically aligned with our middle schools, all the way from our seventh-grade B teams all the way up to our varsity teams. And making sure that we are horizontally aligned, collaborative, and making sure that our programs are connected all the way from middle school to high school. And that we are also collaborating with our coaches and having clinics from seventh grade all the way up to varsity, making sure they understand what our philosophy is as we, so that we are teaching them, one from seventh grade to eighth grade, all the way up to varsity, they know what to expect as they move up into the high school. We expect that we, everyone knows that we have high expectations for all of our athletes and from our coaches. As you can see there on the left, our coaches are great coaches, but they're even better teachers. And we had Teachers of the Year representative on all three campuses, as you can see there. We're very proud of that. So we'll continue to grow through our staff development. And with that, and when that happens, great things happen as they did for our, excellent, thank you, for our building the athletics leaders the EC way. This is something, this is a blueprint that we've been working on for about three years now. As we started with our head coaches academy and then moved all the way down this year, finally implementing our Student Athletic Leadership Council and what we call the circle, the EC Circle of Influence. And so we've got our head coaches involved all the way down to our students, student athletes and leadership council, which then built into what our student athlete groups do. And one of our student athlete groups that we'd like to recognize was our student trainers. And so they were one of the groups recognized, one out of 96 in the nation to receive the National Safety Sports School First Team Award, first time for East Central to be able to be recognized for one of those. So very proud of them. Priority two, implementation, engaged workforce. So implementation of leading the EC way by training leaders so that we have a bench of ready leaders in our athletic leadership pipeline. And as we all know, that all starts with our middle schools, right? And so with our middle schools at Heritage, we had a very successful year at Heritage on the court as well as in the classroom. We were able to keep 97% of the athletes eligible to participate all year at Heritage. So we're excited about that. But they had a great year also in competition. Jordan Mionas, as you see there, won the STACK championship and shot end discus. And I just got a text from his mom and he just won the national championship in Oregon at the Nike Open, just as I know. And then we had a high jump championship champion there, as well as the runner-up at Heritage. So, and then our amazing coaching staff did a great job. Looking forward to having them back next year. Legacy also, great job there. They had a lot of success. They had 300 athletes and they were able to keep 98% of them participating throughout the school years. But that's a great job right there. Legacy was able to bring home the STACK football championship, which we were all very proud and recognized them at the board meeting earlier in the fall. So we're very excited to have those guys coming up to the high school, for sure. But our basketball team, boys and girls, found themselves in the championship in a very, very competitive league of basketball for STACK. Came up short in the championship, but we were right there. Looking forward to those young ladies and young men coming up to the high school. And then we had the District 110 and 300 hurdle champion coming out of Legacy. And of course, the one thing I'm more proud of is that we have every one of those coaches coming back to Legacy next year. And then we have the high school. Well, how can I say, there's not enough room on that slide to put all the pictures that I would like to put up there. If you follow me on Twitter, then you have an idea of what we do. But what I do want to talk about is what they do in the classroom, okay? First of all, we had 151 athletes that were selected for their skill in their all-district selections for their programs that they were in. But more importantly, 193 all-academic. That is, they have to carry an average of 92, an average of 93 throughout their season. And then more importantly, 34 all-state all-academic. That is incredible right there. And we'll continue to grow on that number at the high school, I promise you that. But this is the one thing that we all, every year, we just continue to grow on this number. And that is 30 Hornets will play at the next level. They will have some of all, or a portion of their school paid so that they can continue their dream and their family's dream to go to school and to play at the next level. So we are so excited for them. Priority three, well, this is something that we took really seriously this year, and that's building our partnerships and working, our athletes working with our community and with our schools. And so we did 74 community engagement events this year throughout. That's just with the high school. Next year, we will create an engagement plan for the middle school. So we're excited about that. And we did 74 engagement events this year for the high school, from elementary involvement, middle school nights, community service. So our kids were out there and I'm sure you saw that all over Twitter itself. Priority four, as a department, we have continued to strengthen our partnerships with our operational partners and will continue to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. And thank you, Ms. Judy, always for your support there and the school board, of course. As we kind of conclude, again, I could never have enough slides to put the pictures up there of all of the great things that our kids have accomplished this year. But up there, you'll see, we have district champions, we have regional qualifiers, we have regional champions, we have state qualifiers. And we will continue to grow on that. But more importantly, our athletes, they first take care of the work in the classroom. That's most important. Classroom, character, we're building better people first, okay? Then we take care of the athletes second. But make sure that they are doing their work in the classroom and then it carries over onto the field, as you can see. And we'll continue to work and build that vertical and horizontal alignment with our middle schools to make sure that we are all on the same page and continue to grow and develop and upward. We want to make sure that when they get to East Central High School, that all they do is continue to grow and learn the EC way. And as we finish, I had to put this slide in at the end. So, a little emotional here. That's Michael. As you all know, he is a state champion there. And that's kind of what we're all about right here. That picture of him and Coach Rodriguez, that's been his coach for four years. And that's what it's all about right there. That's the personal relationships that we build with our kids, what we give to them. Because that boy would not be going to Texas without his coaches and the support of his coaches, his teachers, his parents, and the community and what y'all have given for fundraisers and everything that we've had to do for him. But for all of our kids, not just Michael. So I do thank you for that. But you see the personal relationships. And then that picture at softball, wow. The run softball had, but that picture right there, kind of, that kind of just says, "We are EC," right? It was just amazing, the support that we had. Not just softball, you know, when we had the basketball playoff, for y'all, we're all there at the basketball games. We had full stands at the soccer playoff games, it was amazing. But more importantly, it just shows who we are and what we stand for here at EC Athletics. And that, those two pictures right there is what it's all about. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. During the eighth-grade recognition at Heritage, what's happened?
Jordan.
I don't remember if you said it, or if it was at the end, they had a slideshow, an amazing slideshow, it was a piece to put to. But at the end, I'm pretty sure it was in Texas, right? It said that his favorite part of his junior high career was that he beat his brother's record. And so I'm like, "Oh, why are we having to come out now?" Because they competition with the two boys, the brothers members, and so at the basketball.
They actually got to compete against each other at a state level about two weeks ago for the first time because Jordan, Jordan couldn't, they wouldn't let him participate at the junior high level, and they made him participate at the high school level. So when he qualified, they ended up with a state championship, so he got to compete against his brother.
Wow. Yeah, good, good, good community period. And like you said, academics are super focused on it. And you guys, like, just our sports community, like you said, is just phenomenal. Like, because of the memory that shows up, it's very emotional too, because it's just that one game, I was, I was nuts and it was great.
Well, you know, I got to spend some time with the San Benito athletic directors this past week. And they did nothing but compliment our community and our kids. And of course, you know, we'll continue to see them because we have new ladies continuing to come up in the softball world. But also, let's not forget, we're in all the other sports, we'll be competing. What's coming up in the middle schools right now, unbelievable athletes, not only will students first, but then athletes. So we will continue to compete with the San Benito athletic director, which is very, very, very humble, number one. We just have nothing great things to say about the girls, their participation on the field, their sportsmanship. And he said, "Coach, we were sending out tweets and messages because we could not show up, y'all could not have more people, so there was no way, we're known for our fans and our community, and there was no way we were going to let y'all come up and outnumber us." Well, we, because they're keeping up with us on Twitter and the news and, you know. So it was a compliment, not just for the girls, but I think to the community of East Central, of who we are.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Coach, you said you guys did a great job, athletes, coaches, and athletic department. And also, I just want to say, some of the middle, some of the districts are now offering softball and women's. And I think they still also have, we can settle that Monday.
Oh, it's only next year to, for some money to buy equipment so that the following year that we can start to play out with your squad, which we miss. It's a matter also for us of trying to find a little time for field space. But it is, it has to come now because we have, we have sixth graders and seventh graders that are playing national tournaments right now, they're already in our district. And if we don't provide for them, they will go somewhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, well, that will move on to 7.5, 2022 and 2023 district, the Starnes School Card, Scoreboard, School Card, Scoreboard.
Trustees, trustees, Jennifer Hope will bring to the board our signature scorecard for 44. At this time, you can follow along with electronic app for 41.
Before we get into the external scorecard, I want to just take a little pause to contrast it with our state accountability system. So our state accountability system is one where they haven't actually finished making the rules for what they will judge schools on from this last school year. So the school year is done, but they don't know how they're going to score it yet. And furthermore, our third through eighth grade students that took STAR tests, they haven't determined yet who's passed the test. So if we have the scores, we can see how many questions they got right. We know how the kids, they can't tell you who passed the test or not. So given the level of uncertainty from the state accountability system, I think it's really important that we have things like our system where this is based on our community. So it was important. So this is a lot more full reckoning, looking at more of the system than only one narrow assessment from one day snapshot time. And so I'm going to spend some time giving you a quick tour. So some reminders, we have a key at the bottom of it that kind of highlights some things. There's some letters over here that you'll see for everybody. If they're on track, it's an OT. If they're making adjustments, it's an A. And SR is like a bigger, is like bigger changes. And then there's the colors. So you've got blue colors over here, which are kind of the smaller things that they're not as focused on, it's not as high of a priority, it's maybe not as longer of a focus, it's maybe didn't take as big of an investment. And the green and orange are the longer-term, bigger investments. And so looking at the whole district here as a, as a big kind of snapshot, what I like to do is focus in here on 3.1 to 3.3. And what you're going to see here is that there's a lot of adjustments and a lot of green and orange going on. And so what that tells me is that we have a lot of tweaking and focus and attention spent on things like 3.1, which is our support for student learning progress, 3.3, which is growing and achieving academically and behaviorally. And then to a lesser extent, I also see some there on 3.2, where they're talking about growth mindset and to what degree that's part of how we do business. And so I'm going to go into a couple of them and just highlight a few things from the notes here. So you can read, everybody's got a few notes from the campuses, but a couple of highlights that I want to share with you. Many of the campuses are reporting that they had more than a year's worth of growth this year. So while the state uses that one assessment, we have a variety of assessments that we use. And so looking at this variety of assessments, we believe that our kids are largely, probably more than a year over this last school year. Our middle schools, so we don't have third through eighth grade scores, but we do have the end-of-course, the high school test. So we have record numbers of middle school students passing those end-of-course tests. At Heritage, we saw lots from Heritage today. Their biology students had a new record for us, 99% of the students enrolled in biology at middle school passed the test. So that's another great achievement they had. We had a number of campuses, East Central High School, Heritage, Legacy, Harmony, Oak Crest, Salado, and Sinclair, all reporting on their student survey results, where they saw gains with teacher-student relationships, emotional regulation, self-efficacy, growth mindset. And you can see kind of the details of which ones of those went up at their schools if you read through the notes. Two more things, Con Valley had an unusual turnover last year. We talked about how hard it was coming off COVID, but it's hard to retain teachers. Mr. Discano, we have some good numbers for us. PB is reporting that 92% of their teachers intend to come back for the school year. And the last note I have here is that CIA was reporting that the number of graduates that are deemed career-ready went from 25 to 30% because of the changes in how they did the certifications and the work that they did around that. And I'm sure our kids are career-ready. Well, there's a lot more in there. I'll be glad to answer any questions I can to the docs in the external scorecard.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 7.6, 2023, 2024, Formula Grants, federal applications available for public viewers to count.
Sir, trustees, the district participates annually in several federal title programs, as you're very well aware. These would include in part Title I, Part A, Part C, Part D, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, et cetera. The purpose of these funding sources is to create or enhance or extend programs and opportunities for the benefit of the students, the East Central community, our faculty, as well as support of the community. These funds can only be used in the manner for which they're designated and intended as stated in our grant applications. They're aligned with our district and campuses. So the 2023, 2024 grant applications will be submitted July 1. Between now and then, the grant... Between now and then, the grant applications are available for public review in my office. And so they're available for all of you to review, as well as anyone in public who'd like to review those, of course, in July. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? All right, okay, we'll move on to agenda item seven point seven, revision of the board policy DEC Global, compensation and benefits, they used to have. Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, bringing this to you for review this month, we'll bring it back to you for consideration and possibly approval next month, is a minor amendment to board policy DEC Global. It has been recommended and demanded adjustments to the number for the second of days of employee duty before they need medical documentation. Previously, this policy was required for second of days. We are proposing that this be moved to five in second of days before employees provide medical documentation. And so again, this is available for review this month. If you have any questions or would like additional research or information, please contact me and leave that to you, but again, we'll bring this back to you next month for your consideration, if possible.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item seven point eight, district-wide intruder detection audit report findings, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, you are also very aware that Post U Valley, uh, the state of Texas, made some significant commitments to improve the safety of all students and all schools across the state of Texas. One of the programs that was implemented was random intruder audits. Uh, these are facilitated through regional service centers, and the auditor will notify us a couple of days in advance that we make the locations randomly in our district, and their goal is to attempt to gain access to the facilities, to the staff and students, uh, and then complete a conference and audit or review of all doors, security, all visitor management, et cetera. Then they report those findings, uh, open to those findings, or subsequently take it to our district-wide safety committee for review. Uh, any findings, we respond to with training, as well as planning for improvement, and to bring those to the board. And so Mr. McKay is willing to provide the board with an update on our most recent intruder detection audit, because the year's complete. I wanted to also provide a little overview of all of the campuses that we reviewed and what we discovered and learned. But again, this is not intended to be good or bad. It's intended to continue to ensure that we make progress in the area of safety and security. That being said, uh, the board has made substantial investments dating all the way back to the Southern Springs circumstances, and very happy to report that many of the things that are now in the middle of safety standards across the state of Texas have been implemented in some licensed schools for several years. But there's, again, continuing efforts to improve, and perfection is what we're after in terms of safety and security. McKay?
Yes, sir. Throughout the year, the Texas School Safety Center Intruder Detection Auditors came by nine of our campuses. I'm happy to say that at all nine campuses, not one time was an auditor able to gain access to the campus, they were either stopped by an adult before they even approached the school, or once they approached the school, they were not able to get in through any exterior doors and the force to then go through the main entryway, which is back into our visitor, our vestibules, is what we're hoping for. Uh, and the other thing that they check for is that if the schools are following visitor management policies and procedures, and at all nine campuses, Intruder Detection Auditor was required to go through those rigorous processes to be screened before they would be allowed to even gain access to be at an office. So we're really happy to report that. Of the nine campuses, seven campuses had no deficiencies, so after they inspected all paperwork, after they inspected all exterior doors around the entire campus, went through all of the procedures and things we had, they found zero deficiencies. We had two minimal deficiencies that were related to exterior doors in the district this year, at the beginning of the year, as we earlier reported to you. Uh, the high school did have a couple of doors, I mean, they've got hundreds of doors. They did find two that were propped open, and they were able to quickly get on the cameras and figure out that it was a student that was properly trying to get back into the building during lunch. Uh, they, they didn't want to stay outside. Uh, and then most recently, Legacy did also have one door, but it didn't operate properly. So as they went to close it, the latch didn't close all the way. So again, those are very minimal findings. Uh, but in both instances, what we went, uh, what we wound up doing was we provided training for all staff across both campuses, collective responsibility, work order submission processes and procedures, frequency reliability of exterior door sweeps, visitor management procedures, and continued urgency vigilance. Additionally, we established systems to ensure that every campus exterior door is inspected weekly, documented in any of those doors that did not meet the standard, were repaired with expediency. Uh, so the audit findings have been presented and were also approved previously by the School Safety Committee. So, uh, as per the statute, we do have to present that to you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How do we retrain students? Is that put through when we do train our staff? I know that's been popular, but how do we share with students that we need doors propped open and just to be back in, and if they're not gonna be outside?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, so we've actually had campus-wide campaigns where they've had conversations about, and the biggest thing is our kids want to be really, really nice. So they see somebody coming, and they'll particularly advise, but they'll hold their door open, they'll let you go. So we're trying to retrain them, and don't let, it's like strange danger, don't let them in if they, and so what to look out for, but also the reasons why we have to keep doors locked and secured. So we've done that through specific class periods with some training we've got, that we've had, particularly at the high school, just because of the new doors that we have. And also, they have a responsibility to, to be vigilant and to be aware, and also report something if they see something that doesn't look accurate either. So that's been a big campaign that we've had on our campuses as well.
A little bit about the door sweeps.
Yes, sir. So every, uh, every week, uh, the leadership team is required to go around and inspect every single door at every single campus to ensure it's oper, it's operational, uh, and also that it is secure, which means that if it's an exterior door, it's to be locked, and remain locked at all times, unless it's entering into the entry vestibule, that's the only ones that are allowed to remain open, uh, or unless they're behind an exterior fence, then they can also stay unlocked as well. So they go through that procedure, and in the event that there is a door that's found to have a deficiency, it's marked, uh, it's closed, it's secured, our order sign is placed on it, and then we put a work order in immediately, and maintenance has been an exceptional job this year, running over, fixing it as fast as they can, so it's there. If it's gonna take a little bit of time, we depart, and they, they ensure that door's not being utilized, that door has to remain closed and locked. And then as the Intruder Detection Auditor comes in, one of the first steps that they do once they gain access to the visitor management system, is they want to see all the paperwork and documentation, and so at none of the campuses did they ever find any deficiencies with all regards to the paperwork that we keep. We have to show exactly which doors, every door is required to have a number on it, it's supposed to be mapped out, so we can literally go through and say, "Door number thirty-one had a, had a mechanical issue the past week, and it was fixed by the very next day." So we have documentation that supports it, and we have to show it all.
And also, uh, you know, leave proper doors open, not only students, but teachers here also. And so, uh, maybe after the, sorry, they all rang, everybody's in class, I know we have all on, I don't know if I can go around and check the doors and proper.
Exactly.
Uh, you said it, remember, that, that's the series of problems. Proper doors open to come back, it's more time because everyone's walking around. But if, if, if that's the real policy, that's pretty closely known.
Great.
All right, we'll move on to item seven point nine, upcoming events, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, you're missing, maybe it's packing, you've got the June July calendars, we have a couple of things, provides, five of you are currently attending ESLI, Leadership Bits, two downtown, which runs through Saturday, and July. The district is closed July third to fourth, employees will work, the fifth, sixth, and seventh, that'll be Friday, no exception in July, the employees will work, the district will reopen, employees will work three to hour days, as opposed to ten hour days due to preparation and holiday. Uh, and then right around the corner, July twelfth and thirteen, we have our distribution team back for their retreat in workshop, and of course, you're all welcome at the morning, the twelfth, twelve, we're back. We'll be in the high school cafeteria that morning, we'll be starting the starts at seven thirty, and we'll be in a group of about eight, so get your own, welcome your own, twelve, you're welcome on the thirteenth as well, lots of interaction, lots of communication, lots of planning and collaboration. So welcome our teachers and staff, lots of new students back, and so I believe it's just a few weeks away, it's a few weeks away. And your next board meeting, our next board meeting is on July twelfth, at six thirty. Got to answer any questions.
All right, well, we'll move on to the action agenda items, eight point one, district safety and security audit report twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, executive summary, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, uh, by Education Bill thirty-seven one oh eight, requires both the schools to conduct a safety and security audit at their facilities, at least once every three years. We're leaving a conference at facility safety and security audit, this is the case here today to find for, for example, summary. And if you have a copy of those, if you're, you love, and it's packed, McKay?
Yes, sir, absolutely. The, uh, this comprehensive process reviews several things, and reviews the interior and exterior of every facility, uh, safety and security documents that we have. It evaluates the climate culture of our schools, we analyze, uh, the exterior environment as well around, uh, our campuses. Um, so as he already mentioned, you'll find your executive summary. I'm here to just give you a brief overview, I'm not gonna go through all of the pages, but I first would just like to thank all of the, the members. We have eleven members of our audit committee, and many of them are in the audience, but also our principals, spent a lot of time this year going through and ensuring that we have all of the extensive data that we needed to complete this audit, so I just want to say thank you. As part of the brief summary, I just want to, uh, happy to report that our district's multi-hazardous emergency operations plan address all four phases of the emergency management, which around mitigation, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery, to include continuing continuity of operations, and has passed all the standards that have been set forth by TEA, the Texas School Safety Center. They did a very extensive review this year, it was the first time they were as thorough, and they require you to rectify any findings, or any issues that were within your emergency operations plan, and ours came back very clean from the Texas Safety Center, all my colleagues across the state, who reported to me, said it was not that way for them, and they spent months and months and months cleaning, and so I'm very thankful for the team that helped put that together. Uh, our district leadership team, uh, they, they received training on our standard response protocol, our standard reunification methods, crisis communication, and our silent panic alert technology. Uh, we've provided additional training, uh, for our substitutes, our instructional staffs, support staff, volunteers, or, and our students on how to respond in case of emergency. Uh, we've also entered into a mutual aid agreement and memorandum of understanding with ESC twenty, China Grove PD, Elendorf PD, Bear County Sheriffs, SAPD, St. Hedwig Marshals, uh, as well as the San Antonio Emergency Management Center. Uh, we've, all of our personnel have been trained on AEDs and stop the bleed. Uh, and currently, we have thirty-six AEDs across the district and forty-two stop the bleed kits, uh, as well. Our key personnel have been, uh, trained on emergency functions to include our NIMs, which is for the National Incident Management System and Incident Command. We've established a district-wide behavior threat assessment team, uh, which consists of a counselor, we have a law enforcement officer on it, mental health and substance abuse expert, we have a behavioral management, a classroom teacher, special education teacher, school administration nurse, and district emergency planning team member, and each member's been trained, uh, by Region Twenty on behavior threat assessment, and our, our responsibilities in the meantime, if a student exhibits any behavior that can be a threat to themselves or others, then we have to go through the committee, and it's an incredibly extensive process, and the idea is it's not designed to be a disciplinary, but a way to create case management. How do we provide support and services for that student and their family as we work through it? It doesn't involve implementing disciplinary consequences that may happen on the campus, but it does allow us to provide additional support, because how do we help to, to mend and help this family or this student out, whatever the situation is. All staff across the district have also been trained annually on suicide awareness and prevention, trauma-informed practices, human trafficking and bullying recognition and response. All of our campuses have followed the requirements of the exterior doors to be numbered, secured, inspected weekly, and appropriately documented. We have a streamlined process for placing expedited work orders on exterior doors and non-operational doors to ensure that each exterior door facility is properly secured. Uh, and by the start of this next school year, every campus will have had an hardened entry vestibule with approved class attendance windows, secure access points and access control devices to prevent access. So we do have a few next steps that we're gonna continue to do. The first thing is, we want to improve our bystander recording platform to allow students, staff, and the greater community to report possible bullying threats to others, inappropriate social media posts, criminal activity, rebranding it to be called "Not in Our House." Uh, so we're gonna be doing some extensive training with our staff. Uh, we also want to use that to provide education to our students, staff, parents, and community on bystander recording. Uh, all schools are scheduled to have their exterior doors and adjacent windows outside of their perimeter fencing hardened with bullet-resistant film, which will give a lead time, as you learned last month, of, of up to six minutes of delay if an intruder was trying to get in from the exterior. Uh, of course, next year, all of our schools' exterior fencing, we're working to get them renovated, so they meet the requirements as non-scalable. We're gonna continue to invest in enhanced visitor access controls and interior building improvements, reconfigurations, uh, improve key control and upgrade locking systems in buildings and classrooms. Uh, we're gonna continue to lead district-wide campaigns around fentanyl and vehicle awareness, or any other dangerous behaviors that we see that start to creep up, uh, in our community across the state. One thing I'm incredibly excited about is we recently partnered with T Chat, which is the Texas Child Health Access Through Tell Medicine for students to receive free, remote counseling for drug, vape, or alcohol abuse. Our counselors are doing a great job helping families and students to get, uh, signed up for that. Uh, additionally, we have an MOU in a partnership with the Ecumenical Center that provides free counseling for students who are experiencing anxiety, depression, grief, or any other emotional and mental health supports that they may need. I know at the high school, they are actually able to meet the counselor at onsite in any of those, at the lower grades, they're able to set up outside services from there. I do have a couple of slides that I'll show you, but one of the things we've recently gone into a cooperative partnership with is with the San Antonio Fire Department, our local ESDs, Bear County Sheriff's, San Antonio Police Department, and all other local, uh, police department agencies, uh, to work on unified commands and active shooters. So we recently, uh, went through a drill just as Tuesday at Pecan Valley, where they, we brought in some student actors, we brought in some kids from our theater arts department, and let me tell you, they were really good, uh, and they went through an hour-long training with the East Central Police Officers, as well as all the local law enforcement that was here, uh, and they went through simulations that they put them through. Uh, so one of our commitments that we are going to do is continue this partnership with them to train and develop all local, uh, agencies, as well as our agencies, on how we respond in a crisis situation, and how do they work together to be able to do that. The next thing was this year, we really began to get clear about standard reunification, uh, methods, and so we've gone through a lot of extensive training with staff. Uh, and what we did in April was we actually ran a soft drill, really was to measure our readiness across the district, in the event that we had to evacuate a campus. Now let me be really clear, ninety-nine percent of the times when we have to evacuate a campus, it has nothing to do with a crisis event, it could be some kind of environmental impacts towards the outside, we can lose power and not be able to do that, we may have to relocate students. So for our elementaries and our middle schools, we will relocate to Patterson Center for the Performing Arts. So what we did was, we went through an exercise where we treated it like it was the drill. We, we, when Mr. T called it, we immediately started calling, we got on our call trees, and we saw how long it was gonna take for us to mobilize. So I have a few pictures, this is all the district staff that had to get set up. And I'm happy to report that we were able to get everybody there, mobilized and set up for reunification within thirty-six minutes, so you gotta imagine, we have two hundred and sixty square miles, uh, and nobody knew that we were doing it that day, and then when we made the call, uh, it started. So we were incredibly proud, and seeing Mr. B K give us some direction there, and, uh, we're turning on, but that was, uh, that was great. But, uh, uh, you know, our goal is that we want to continue to advance our position across CCISD for safety and security, and will not rest until we do so. So again, we have a more extensive report, and you're happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, sir. On those exterior doors, they all function, I'm pretty sure that's your work line, right?
Yes, sir.
Would that get prior to you?
Yes, sir. They, that's something that Mr. Thompson's team have done an exceptional job of, is going right away over there, jumping on those, and if in the event it's multiple that need to be fixed across the district, his team divides and compares, and they go out, so like, you know, every campus has a building mechanic, we can go over and take a quick look, sometimes it's just tightening the screw down, and if it needs more extensive, then he, they call the troops, and they all run over there, do what they need to take care of. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to.
To express an argument for approval of the District Safety and Security Audit Report twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, and the Executive Summary has presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the District Safety and Security Audit Report twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, Executive Summary has presented. A motion? A motion from Tony Christmas? Have a second? Have a second from Jim DeFrieson? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. That will move on to item eight point two, Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four premiums, Mr. Scott.
Mr. President, trustees, in your this latest packet, you have some information that is for your reference, as comparison plans from some of our neighboring colleagues in other districts. As the board knows, we need to be very proactive as an organization to ensure that our employees move from reactive healthcare to proactive ones. And in order to do that, we need to increase accessibility, and the way we did that a few years ago was to create our employee clinic. And then in that employee clinic, we were committed to zero compays, to accessible free prescriptions, generic, and that we had hours available for our employees to meet their needs, and that if they couldn't get in there face-to-face, they had access to our physician for the network of physicians via telemedicine. And beyond that, every employee and their beneficiaries, defendants have access to telemedicine, whether they say or don't. And so we continue to see tremendous feedback from our employees about the clinic. We're happy that we're able to add a nurse practitioner to support Dr. Hill, which gives us the ability to spend hours longer in the day, and to also provide early morning sessions on Monday and Friday, which was a request in the last couple of years from our employees. We're still able to offer the rich plan that comes with our plan, but unfortunately, due to volatility of healthcare industry and costs associated, increasing costs associated with healthcare benefits, we are having to have a small increase in the premiums, the district is increasing the contribution, to the extent that we could, we're adding another twenty-five dollars to the district side. What you see reflected in those premiums is about a fifty-dollar increase. So again, when you look at the comparison, you'll see that we are not the least expensive, and certainly not the most expensive, but when you look at plan-to-plan comparisons, we believe that ours is still a very rich plan by comparison, and we believe that the plan itself matters more than the five dollars here, the twenty dollars difference in the premiums from our job class, the plans a day off of their employees. You'll also see in your electronic packet, in the proposed rates, that those rates are differentiating between P H A and non-P H A. You'll also recall that as far as proactive initiatives here for healthcare, that we do provide access for all of our employees every spring at their job location to get their, their blood work done, and they get subsequent personal health assessment to know their numbers. We provide support through Wonder Health for them to respond to those numbers and make progress in their overall health and wellbeing, and they can follow up with our physician and our employee clinic to make sure that they're really in partnership with their physician. We incentivize that by giving them an additional discount of twenty-five dollars to the premium if they do the K check, if their spouse is also on the plane, they both do it, they can get the benefit. And so you see the premiums that we proposed to you tonight, you reflect that minor increase, but you also see the differentiation cost for our employees due to P H A, get that additional benefit, and those that do not. We are currently approaching seventy percent of our plan participants that have already completed their P H A, which our partners from U V C say that's extraordinary, that's a perfect, we have that number of employees actually go through their blood work, be proactive about their numbers. And so we believe that our, our initiative is working. It's the end of the day, we want healthy people, so they're there for their families, they can be their best health when they're here. We certainly support the board's support and allow us to continue to invest in managing our healthcare program. And so I'd like to thank Shannon, the benefits team, for the extraordinary work that they do to manage costs, we'll continue to do that. We do believe that over time, that we're going to be able to continue to have cost savings and pass those on to our employees. We'd be happy to answer, I gave you an overview, but there's more details in your electronic packet. Of course, Shannon and I can answer any question you might have, as Shannon will certainly become an expert in managing healthcare.
Mr. President, I recommend more approval of Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan for the years, the year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and the proposed premiums as presented. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, proposed premiums as presented, do you have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Mr. David Garza, have a second? Have a second from Jim DeFrieson? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move on to agenda item eight point three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and employee compensation schedule, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, according to the new chapter, this latest packet infographic with a highly summary of the compensation increases that the sheriff's board denied for consideration. As you're aware, the board, they commission, the district, the board's corporate commission T A S B to do another salary study per policy and the board's expectations, we're to ensure that every employee across every job classification may pay due, if aren't, for what they do, that there is equity internally across the organization as it relates to compensation. We are again able to advise the board with a compensation package that does meet those requirements. We remind the board that the last two years, with your support and direction, we're able to provide our employees with averages of five percent a year for the last two-year salary increases. Unfortunately, because the legislature has not concluded the session, we've moved into special sessions and have not taken any action on any of the legislation, we could potentially provide additional funding for the schools. We are going to have to tighten our bootstraps to provide this year's compensation package. A highlight of that package that we're asking you to consider tonight includes moving first year teacher pay up from fifty-six thousand here to fifty-seven-five for teachers, nurses, librarians, academic programs facilitators, and instructional specialists. We're increasing an average of three percent across the board for administrators, various professionals, and auxiliary staff, also three percent, however, midpoint. We also adjusted the pay ranges per the recommendation of the T A S B, some minimum midpoint and maximum ranges increased, which will then increase the midpoint, three percent midpoint increase in some of those cases. We increased the signing bonus for hard-to-field, hard-staff areas, bilingual, secondary math science, speech pathology, special education, licensed school psychologist, occupational physical therapist. We officially have a fifteen hundred dollar signing bonus, we're proposing to double that bonus, and to give it over two years, we would like to see these employees join us and receive fifteen hundred dollar bonus and stay with us and receive the bonus. We also are increasing several stipends per recommendation of the T A S B, and all of this is to ensure that our folks are compensated comparable, as you mentioned, with the market and the job classification duties. Those stipend increases, to name a few, included athletics, coaching stipends, band, choir, bilingual, special education life skills, redirection, and library media specialist. We are also making some adjustments to not only the pay, but the structure of our substitute rates. Looking at the data, we have determined it's beneficial for us to create some differentiation for substitutes to take jobs at the secondary level, and if they're certified teachers at the secondary level, they make a hundred dollars, a hundred seventy dollars a day. If they are a substitute who is certified as a teacher at the elementary level, they make a hundred and fifty dollars a day. We're finding secondary field rates lag behind elementary field rates, we want to incentivize folks to consider secondary assignments more than they currently do. And also rates increase, so whether certified, non-certified, or degree, or not degree, all of those rates increase. We also are very thankful for the board's buyback and retirement program that you implemented several years ago. We're proposing an increase to that buyback of retirement, if we're called and folks retire, if they have any leave locally left, then we will buy theirs back up to a hundred days, at a particular rate. We're asking to increase that rate to a hundred and fifty dollars per day, per day, which means employees can retire from the district. If they have up to a hundred days, they can earn fifteen thousand dollars for that, and if they have days on the state side, they can earn a hundred dollars per day. I'm sorry, if they're professional artillery staff, they can earn a hundred dollars per day, which can earn them a ten thousand dollar check if they have a hundred, a day's remaining. The state leave buyback remains the same, but that can earn them additional revenue at the time, so we're just asking to buy back the days at a, at a higher rate than So again, the recommendation being proposed tonight do reflect all of the recommendations that T A S B provided the district to get folks in mind for the market, but I am happy to report that the majority of our employees across job classifications are competitive with the market, and many of our pay structures are adequate, and those, again, those need adjustments, those adjustments are reflected, we want to present it for your consideration tonight. The cost of what we're presenting tonight, with no new money of the legislature at this point in time, we'll add an additional two point nine million dollars to expenditure side of our budget, please, on the budget side. Be happy to answer your questions.
Questions, comments?
This fifty-seven thousand page on Mr. Bash.
Yes, sir, that's Bash, we're disagreeing, we get an additional eighteen hundred on top of that if that matters.
Right. Right. Good. All right, we're good.
Yeah, the entire salary statement is in your electronic packet. Do you have additional questions, comments?
Mr. President, I recommend more approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four employee compensation schedule as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four employee compensation schedule as presented, do you have a motion?
No.
Have a second?
Okay.
Have a second from Victor Carson? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight point four, two-year extension of the depository contract, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, per Education Code Chapter forty-five, twenty oh five, Subcheck G, school district depositories, a, a school district may extend its depository contract for three two-year terms. The district has extended its depository contract, well, embargoed, to that maximum of three two-year term for a total of six years, and that's scheduled to end this August of twenty twenty-three. However, as you're aware, the district is a district motivation, this gives the district some flexibility and control, and this is one area that we're able to exempt ourselves from that particular statute. The local motivation plan is allowing the district to extend the depository contract past the six-year limit. This D O I change was approved on April tenth, twenty twenty-three, by the D O I Committee of Public Meeting, and then on May eighteenth by the board of trustees. The depository extension can be full period of the local innovation plan, which will begin on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-eight. At this time, we recommend a two-year extension, not the extension all the way to twenty twenty-eight just yet. We are recommending a two-year extension of the depository contract, well, embargoed, and it approved, that would end in August of twenty twenty-five. Then at that time, our staff will decide if the district wants to continue a one-year extension or go out for a depository bid. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Trustees, I recommend more approval for a two-year depository contract extension per the D O I local innovation plan with Wells Barrow Bank to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve a two-year depository contract extension per the D O I local innovation plan with Wells Barrow Bank to August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, do you have a motion? Have a motion for a motion increases, have a second?
Second.
Have a second from James Mulkey? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move on to the consent agenda, is there any trustee that might have anything to do with the consent agenda? No, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Have a motion from Tony Fries, do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Emilio Carrasco? Do you want to? Yes. Second, 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 second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That will move on to.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, for us. Oh, yes, thank you so much, that was beautiful, thank you very much.
The adjournments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here it is.